Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. City staff, invited guests. Want to welcome you to our public work session. Also like to acknowledge our city manager, Mr. Stephen Carter, our city attorney, Attorney Lavonda Graham-Williams, and our city clerk, Ms. Deborah White. And acknowledge my colleagues on council. And at this time, I would ask Ms. White if you would please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Ms. Bryant.
Present.
Dr. Dotson.
Here.
Mr. Hugel.
Present.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Tillage.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here. Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, council. Welcome to the work session for May 27th. We're near the end of the month already.
Indeed, we are.
I have a couple of presentations scheduled, but one has not shown. So we're going to kind of reverse the order of things that was listed. Hopefully, Dr. Reddick will get here in time for his presentation, but if not, we will move on. We have with us tonight Ms. Emma Coler. She's with the Friends of Foster Care, and she's going to be our first presenter for this evening. Ms. Coler, if you don't mind, if you come to the podium, introduce yourself, and the Friends of Foster Care.
Thanks, members, for having me.
Whoa.
The arrows. Perfect. My name is Audra Bullock. Emma Coler is our program assistant. She's the one who coordinated these meetings for me. So you're stuck with me tonight. I apologize if that's a disappointment. My name is, again, Audra Bullock. I am the founder and CEO of the Friends of Foster Care. If you'll indulge me, I'd really like to give you some context of why I'm standing here with all of you. In 2015, my husband and I were looking to do more for families in our community, get more involved in real, true, nitty-gritty philanthropy, and we decided that foster care might be a good thing for us to do. We had older children going off to college. He's from a first marriage. We had a big house that had empty bedrooms, and we wanted to do something that involves children. I, at the time, was working at NASA. I'm an electrical engineer by degree and all of my career until the last 10 years. We fostered and thought that that was it. We would provide a home, a bed. We had room in our hearts in our homes, and that was it. But we became pretty alarmed at the gaps that existed for these kids, so much so that I, as a mom, couldn't sleep. And so I decided that we needed to do more, more than just fill up our home. We needed to walk alongside social service agencies across our region to see if we couldn't help bridge some of those gaps. That's why I'm here in front of you today. I did not intend to hang up my cleats as an engineer, but being a mom on a mission is a much bigger endeavor for me personally, which is why I'm talking with you today. So thank you for having me. I'd like to start with kind of an understanding of what foster care is, mainly out of my own ignorance. I was a foster parent licensed before I understood what foster care really was. So I'm going to give you a brief snapshot of foster care in our state and our region. Right now, it's actually not 5,200, so that's a little old. There's 5,600 kids in the foster care system in Virginia. That trend has been going up over the last year markedly. I personally am glad to see that. I think there's some underreporting going on in the state. We've watched our numbers plummet during the pandemic, and we know that things were not so rosy to reflect that. Each year, about 7,000 to 7,500 kids pass in and out of the foster care system in our state, and they spend an average of 24 months in care. In Portsmouth, these numbers are not up here, but they're in your handout. There are 48 youth currently in care today. That's up from 35% since 2022, which, again, I was a bit glad to see. I think that Portsmouth's numbers in foster care are lower compared to the rest of the region, and we struggled to figure out exactly why. But it's down 65% since 2016, when I entered into this line of war. The average age of kids in care in the state is eight years old. In Portsmouth, it is 11 and 1/2. So our center of gravity is towards older youth in foster care, and that becomes important in the services that I'll talk about. Exits from foster care in the city of Portsmouth, last year, there were seven, and 71% were five. And that doesn't seem like a lot. Five isn't a lot, but 71% were to emancipation. That is youth that are leaving the system as legal adults without connection to family. So I set that stage to tell you then also about adverse childhood experiences. I'm sure you all have heard about this ACE study from Kaiser Permanente that asks the 10 questions of these adverse experiences in childhood that are correlated markedly disastrous health consequences as adults. Not just a 35% greater increase of lung disease or heart disease. It's 300%, 200% increase in liver disease. The associated risky behaviors of self-medication, drug use is 11 times greater. Suicide attempts are 15 times greater. Early sex is also greater. And I mention all of these things to let you know that the outcomes of the youth in foster care are driven in part by these outcomes, these adverse childhood experiences and poor health outcomes. But the risky behavior outcomes lead us with a community that's aging out, that is not entering productive adulthood. Of the children in foster care, and I was surprised to know this, they don't teach you this in the classes to license as foster parents, unfortunately. Half of our kids have an ACE score of four or more, and that's where you're at the greatest risk. Personally, I have two children that are adopted from foster care. One has an ACE score of six, the other has an ACE score of eight. And I am doing everything I can to make sure that I mitigate those risk factors for them so that they don't encounter the dangers like what you see on the right side of the screen. So also not on there, but I will quote you the statistics because it's really important in why we do what we do. Of all youth in the nation that are interfacing with the foster care system, 58% graduate high school. That compares to an 87% graduation rate for the general population. Less than 3% get a four-year diploma compared to 28% of the general population. Only 9% have housing by age 26. That compares to 30% of the non-foster care population. Only 46% are employed by age 26 compared to 80% of the general population. And a whopping 64% of men, young men, and 33% of young women are incarcerated, and that compares to 9 and 3% respectively. Those are horrible outcomes. So again, why I decided to stop what I was doing and focus on this, because to me, this is a crisis. These are young people that don't have a shot. So with that understanding and the subset that ages out, and those are the statistics you see on the right-hand side of the screen, 71% of our young women that age out of the system become pregnant within the first year, and half of their babies come into foster care within two years. That is my second adopted child from foster care. We lived this, and I had no idea that these horrifyingly, seemingly horrifyingly extraordinary statistics happen so commonly in foster care. You can read the other statistics. One that I will point out, though, and this is where our system does not do a good job serving these children, is that 40% of the youth in foster care have three or more homes in the state of Virginia while they're in foster care. That's alarming to me. That instability that will not allow them to become productive members of our community. And there are 20% of those kids that have six or more homes. Those are broken individuals that are very hard to repair. So what do we do? As an organization, I set out to change that. I set out to make sure that when we made promises to children, especially vulnerable youth that are in foster care, that we were going to keep those promises no matter what, that we were going to work to make sure that they had an environment where they could thrive, that they had opportunities that when state and the federal funding cannot provide it, that the community's providing it because they're worth it, because they need us to come in and let them know that not only do we care, but we're there to make sure that they can make it through these very hard times and become productive citizens. So how does this align? And thank you so much for your detailed questions. It was very lovely to have such guidance. How does this align with Portsmouth's vision? We all are looking for strong families, resilient children, communities that can be self-sustaining. Children in foster care don't leave a community unless they're unfortunately trafficked out. They stay here, and if they can become productive members of society, they come back in droves to pay forward to other children in the system. I have never met a more miraculous group of people than the children that we serve in foster care. I've seen it time and time again. When my husband and I went down to the information seminar to license, half of the people that were there to become foster parents had been in foster care as children. I was alarmed. I had no idea. I had no experience with social services before that date. I had no intersection with foster care, just had a big heart and knew some kids needed some help. But that testament to what investing in now can pay later, I think, is really an important point to remember. So we partner with Portsmouth DSS through MOU. We have a memorandum of understanding and have had a partnership with the city since 2018 to serve all of the youth in care. And I will go through all of those services. We're complementary. Our resources come by me running around and begging everybody I meet for money so that we can serve these kids, so they're very hard-earned dollars. A lot of these people are my personal friends, and I want to make sure that every dollar that we spend is not a duplicate with any other service that can be provided, either whether that is not being able to be met because there's not a funding stream for it or because it can't be met in a timely manner to meet the children's needs. Our scope of services, what we provide are pretty simple, five or six different things. In-home one-on-one tutoring. Portsmouth has, as you've heard, some of the worst educational outcomes of any group in the nation. So that is our single largest program and more than half of our budget each year. We hire professional teachers, either currently licensed schoolteachers or retired schoolteachers to work in-home and work one-on-one with youth in care. They are trauma-informed. We have briefings with them on an annual basis and an online repository that they can go in and train on our population. They're the experts on tutoring, on education, but they do need to understand the population that they're serving and its needs. We have college and career prep coaching for our high schoolers, where we pull them aside, the ones that are in our tutoring program, and we ask them what they want to do, and we help make that plan happen for them, giving them incentives along the way of the process to be successful, not being successful, if that makes sense. We're not rewarding good grades. We're rewarding following the process to get to good grades, and the results have been really quite miraculous. We provide enrichment activities, things where foster care stipend is not adequate to maintain a whole year of gymnastics or soccer, music, arts. We provide YMCA memberships and other activities that are of interest to youth. And then we provide every child a birthday and a holiday gift on those days that are hard to be away from your family. We provide all of this for every youth that is in foster care on a referral basis, every youth in foster care for the holiday and birthday gifts, but every youth that wants this. Every social worker that asks for these services, we will provide up to two years after exiting foster care, unless you are an aged-out youth, and then we support you until you're 26 with our services, because state funding stops at 21, and that's not long enough to get through college, and it's often not even long enough to get through trade school, given where our children are graduating high school. We serve 60 youth approximately a year in foster care. Those are the ones that enter foster care, are still in foster care, and exit foster care through the Department of Social Services proper. I also put a number up there of youth that are living, foster youth that are living in the city of Portsmouth that are not going through PDSS, Portsmouth Department of Social Services, that we also serve with resident foster families that are living right here in Portsmouth. All totaled, we're about 130 youth a year that are here, and I can give you numbers on how much we've invested in those youth over the last several years, if you're interested. Our services are completely free, completely free to DSS as well as the families. That is important to me because I watched some families with the biggest hearts in the world struggle to make ends meet, to be able to provide a home and a nurturing environment for the children, and we want to make sure that, separate from whatever is going on in their family situation, their financial situation, that these children are afforded an opportunity to thrive with loving parents. And our impact has been really, I think, great for the children that have participated in the program, particularly our generation. And as you might imagine, as an engineer, I am very data-driven. I count everything. We have a robust program management system that we developed in-house that helps manage all of the programs for us. At any point in time, I can get you any of the data that you need, you might be interested in on our programming and participation and outcomes, and I have a slide to share with you some of the outcomes. Success story? I left you with a couple in there to read through. I'll talk about one that's really my favorite. There was a young man. He had been with us from very, like, very early on. I think he started in 2016. He started tutoring in 2017 with us. He has, you know, said to us, failing every single subject, literally right down the row, all Fs. He and his younger brother had come into care. They were separated. We worked with him. The first year, he did not pass. We worked with him the second year, and he started to improve his grades. By the third year, he was making As, Bs, and Cs, and he eventually made it into Honorable. And in his senior year, still with us, still tutoring, participating in YMCA, doing the summer camp, he actually went to be a counselor in training at one of the YMCA camps. He was taking music lessons and voice lessons. He was thriving in all the ways. He started taking AP classes in his senior year. He then graduated and was accepted to multiple universities and now attends Norfolk State. He has been a couple more years there. And I want to say, you know, I can't predict what would have happened, but I can almost with certainty tell you, he was not going to be a kid that would get adopted, one at 17, and he did. Number two, he would not be a kid that would stay out of the justice system, and he has, and he's now getting a degree. So that kind of example, to me, is why we do the work that we do. Now, not everybody gets to do this. Not everybody stays in care this long, and we lose touch of them sometimes when they leave care, and we don't want to have our services anymore, but we work really hard to make sure that we can stay in the lives of these children because that difference can make or break these kids. Okay, so service gaps, we try and fill as many as we can. Consistent access to educational support, I think, is the biggest gap, and it's not just here. It's not just Hampton Roads, the state of Virginia. It's across the nation. And then enrichment activities, where these kids don't get the opportunity to go out and do gymnastics all year long or have contact with organic mentors that might be able to help them build skills and confidence and resilience. So we're ready to deepen our impact. I will tell you. So right now, when I talked to you about the 50, so places by location, we have 139 that are either from PDSS or living in Portsmouth, from other localities. 59 of those youth that we're currently serving are from PDSS. 48 are currently in care. Only 12 of them live in Portsmouth. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, too. So when I lumpen other children in foster care that are living here in the community, please realize that the children that are coming from PDSS are not by and large placed here. I don't know why. That's above my category. But I want you to know that, that there are other communities that children are living in, too. So we, as an investment total here in Portsmouth, we've invested direct services of almost half a million dollars in our existence. $300,000 for tutoring, incentives and scholarships. We've had close to $30,000 in camps, investing in emergency needs. We have an emergency needs program to help eliminate barriers for children, especially when they're reunifying with their families of origin, and then about $100,000 worth of gifts. So our key partnerships are clearly the Portsmouth Department of Social Services, but local teachers. CASA, we've partnered with the Friends of the Juvenile Court to provide gifts in that regard and to collaborate to try and raise awareness of the needs of more advocates in general. We partner with the YMCA and Access Foundation, as well as funding partners like Beasley Foundation and the United Way. And again, we have formal MOUs with all the cities that we serve. So funding sustainability. How do we fund all this? Like I said, I beg all my friends to give me money so that we can do this because I feel like it's really important, and that is almost 50% of our funding base. We have about 40% that we get from foundations like Beasley and Hampton Roads Community Foundation, and then we have 15% in-kind and investment revenue. In-kind is the birthday gifts. We ask community sponsors to go get these things for us. For us, it's really important to engage community so that people know that the kids exist here because a lot of times, we confidentiality our foster kids into obscurity, and nobody knows what's going on. So for us, it's a powerful mechanism for outreach. Equity and inclusion and community engagement. All of our staff and all of our tutors are trauma-informed. We use culturally responsive practices. More than 50% of our staff and tutors are the BIPOC community. We try as best what we can to mirror the racial composition of the youth that we serve. For us, that is extremely important. We also have DSS advisor from each of the localities that we serve. They are present for all of our board of directors meetings, and we are in the midst of establishing a foster youth advisory board so that youth with lived experience still in foster care in the fostering futures program or recently aged out of it can direct our programming, and that has been in the works for about six months now, and we'll start our inaugural class of that in September. And the question, I think, is really brilliant. How do we engage families? So for us, we're a child-centric organization. So wherever the child's caregivers are, or whoever the child's caregivers are, we are engaging them. We're engaging them in tutoring, in involvement in the school system, involvement in the IEP process. We're engaging them with the rest of our services. Every YMCA membership we give is a family membership so that families can bond and go to the Y and get all of the benefits together, and all of that transports to whomever the child is with. And that's if reunification with biological family or relative, that's where our membership and our services go, or if it is post-adoption, it's with the adopted family. Or if they age out again, we're staying with them, made a commitment to stay with them until they're 26. We're data-driven, and I've got metrics on everything. We look at not only grades, and we do a snapshot report card every year, and I'll show you that in just a second, for the kids in our tutoring program, but we're looking at how many times did you use the YMCA? We're looking at what extracurricular activities you did. We're looking at nationally-normed pre- and post-evaluation diagnostics on tutoring because often we will get kids that have a report card that says FFFF, and at the bottom, the teacher's comment is, "Way to go. Keep up the hard work," because we were failing at a 30%, but now we're only failing at a 60%, which is a huge, a huge gap that has been bridged. So we track as much data as we can because I want to be out of business sooner than later. I don't want to have to do this. I want the community to be surrounding these kids. I want the social service system to be able to meet all the needs, and I want these kids not to be like what happened for my daughter that I adopted, an infant born in foster care who was destined to live the same life that her mom did, bouncing from home to home to home without an education, aging out of the system, and running as far away from it as she could when she was 18 rather than staying in for those resources. And I was up there. So how can, oh, we do issue monthly uterization reports to all of our partners. We do quarterly briefings to our agencies through our quarterly meetings, and then we update all of our stakeholders with impacted and annual reports. So how can residents of the city of Portsmouth become involved? They can tutor. We hire, again, licensed teachers, so we have teachers in the area. Right now, we have 13 employed here in the city. We would really love to have birthday and holiday sponsors. We have advocacy events going on, especially in foster care month, in the month of May, and volunteering opportunities in many different places. Let's look at the report card. So this is how we're doing, just being counting on the left because we don't have grades and the academy schools aren't all over yet. And then on the right, I have our report card from '23, '24 academic year. So so far this year, we've tutored 385 kids. We consider us intervening at a session mark of four times that the tutor meets with the kids, and that we call that our persistence rate. And that's when we start collecting the report cards and grading ourselves on our efficacy. 90% have persisted. That's monumental. If we talk about how often these kids move and where they go and exiting care, for 90% to stay with us, I am so proud of that. The secret has been, because years ago, it wasn't like this, the secret has been, I pay them. I bribe them. Every session they go to, they get $10 credit towards a $50 gift card. When you make five sessions, I pay out your gift card. And I have watched kids that absolutely hate tutoring make As and Bs because they stay with us for one little $50 gift card, which is awesome. But that's how I've been able to do that. Last year, 85% of our kids passed every tutored class, which to me is amazing. 40% of our kids in the tutoring program are moving each year. 80% passed all their classes. That, like, gives me goosebumps that I cannot describe. 95% promoted, but we're a promotion state, so we were going to promote them whether they could read or not, and we've gotten them in the eighth grade that are reading on a kindergarten level, and I am not kidding about that. I don't know how that happens, but it does. We get them functionally literate. We work on the soft spots, and we make them, we make them or help them achieve their goals. 100% of our seniors have graduated on time or early last academic year. Okay, so our strategic vision is, again, to be the most inclusive So, our strategic vision is, again, to be the most inclusive partner that we can. We want to expand our transitioning youth program. We're ready to do that. It's a matter of engagement. We're here, we're free, we're ready. And we want to expand to CPS-involved youth. We've done this in the city of Norfolk as a pilot for the last several years, and we feel it's been very helpful. So, not just foster youth, youth that are on the verge of coming into care. We would like them to stay out of care if there is at all a service that we can provide that might prevent them from entry into care. That separation from a primary caregiver is devastating for a child, as you know. And what can you do to help us? You can lean on your agency partner and say, "Hey, have you heard about this amazing resource, Friends of Foster Care? Can we use them for every child in our service region? Can we make sure that every child has a tutor in school?" Because we don't ask, "Are you making straight As?" We don't care. I hope you are making straight As. I feel like it's, like it's a gym. We can all go into the gym and we can work out. We've got big muscles to begin with, we're going to get stronger. If we've got no muscles, we're going to build something. So, for us, we'd love to have all the school-aged children, not just 17% in our programming. And then you can connect us to partners, and we would absolutely welcome your investment on the side of us. But that is not why I reached out to you in the first place. I just wanted to share with you what we are doing here for the children from this program. That is it. I apologize for the formatting. This picture that you see on the right is the college tour from last year. We take these kids on college tours when they're in our tutoring program. We asked them if they would go with us, and we took them to University of Pennsylvania, an Ivy League school. And I'm pretty sure we're probably one of the only ones in the country taking foster kids to an Ivy League school to run the halls. But for me, I'm a first-generation college graduate. Had I not had a teacher say to me, "You can do it," I would not have gotten a PhD in electrical engineering. And I think the same is thing, same thing for them. They need access, they need exposure, and they need to be treated like they have the potential that they do. So, I will, I will leave you with that and ask if there are any questions.
Thank you. Dr. Bullock.
Yes.
Yes.
Indeed.
Thank you.
Are there any, your counsel...
Presented us with some statistics of the averages, but you didn't present us with any of the outcomes of your students against these statistics, especially those with them...
Yes.
Those. Are those...
I'm sorry, I...
I don't want to belabor this meeting with it, but if there are...
I lost it. I'm sorry, it's in the bottom. So, for our kids, for all years, we've got 95% of the kids in our tutoring program promoting, 88% passing all their classes, and 98% of our seniors graduating.
Understood, but some of the statistics you presented on, like, the pregnancies and the incarceration and things like that, can I get those from you, like, after the meeting? I don't want to belabor this meeting with it.
I do, I do not have all of this. I will mirror what I do have of those.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Thomas, may we have a floor?
Thank you. Dr. Bullock, thank you for this presentation. You provided a lot of great information, information that, like you said, you're just not aware of, and I think you said something, the word invisible, and how sometimes these children in foster care, because of the confidentiality, they can become invisible. So, thank you for the work that you've done to bring them to light and how we can help. I was happy to see on your last slide what we can do, like your, what are you asking? And one of the, I see, I was going to ask, my question was, do you have any partnerships with Portsmouth Public Schools? And then your number, I think you mentioned, do I have this right that you said 12 students, 12 children?
12 youth live here.
Live here.
Correct.
And then the other 59 from DP, Department of Social Services in Portsmouth, live outside of Portsmouth?
Correct.
Okay, and we don't know why. Probably because there's not enough foster families in the city, maybe?
No, I'd love to say yes, and I don't think I can, because I serve another 60 youth that are from other localities that are in foster homes in Portsmouth, and they go to the Portsmouth schools. I, I don't understand the dynamics of it. I've tried to figure that out, actually.
I would be interested, too, to kind of learn more about that, but I, I definitely feel like there's a, I'm going to look into this as well to pass information on to you, but there's a definite partnership, I believe, with the schools. You've touched on ACES and how that impacts really everything, like their learning in schools, and how you mentioned the, you know, the grades and impact from your tutoring and why you identified that that's one of the biggest needs of success and impact. But I do know that for, I came from the school board, and Portsmouth Public Schools, they do have the youth, youth and risk prevention services, as well as the support services, which includes foster care as one of their support service arms. And I, I think there's just some, some opportunity there, so I'll definitely...
I would love to connect.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Give that information to you.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hugel, sir, you have a floor?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Bullock, appreciate the, the brief, a few questions.
Of course.
So, on, on this slide, you talk to an immediate need for transitioning youth services.
Yes.
Transitioning youth, meaning they're aging out?
Yes.
Or, okay, so, do you work with Portsmouth At Work? Because Portsmouth At Work has free program to help kids get connected to post-high school training to get jobs.
I do not, and I would love to be connected.
Okay.
Absolutely love to be connected.
So, maybe we can, through DSS, get, get you connected with Portsmouth At Work. Second question, do you know of Portsmouth United? Are you aware of that effort?
No.
Okay, so, there's another connection, community connection. Portsmouth United is connected to a whole bunch of nonprofit grassroots organizations that provide free program, and so trying to fit what you do in with all of the other things that all of those other groups do is kind of what Portsmouth United is all about. And so, getting you connected with Ms. Matthews and seeing if there's, you know, how to plug what you do in with everything else that Portsmouth United is doing.
Fabulous.
So, third question, so, so I'm on the board of the UP Center. They have a foster program.
Yes, they do.
You didn't mention them or other similar foster program providers in the area as partners. Do you partner with them or, or no?
So, we partner with the locality, because they hold the guardianship. So, every child that is in foster care through any of the localities that we partner with, and there's 21 of them now, if they're with us, yes, we serve them. UP Center, so we partner with UP Center in things like Foster Care Aware, it's an event that we have to recruit foster families and advocates for CASA. That's how we partner with them. But for the services, absolutely, the UP Center caseworkers can request our services. Our obligation is, our first obligation is to the city workers with the, the guardianship of children. So, work with, alongside, they receive services. And again, our authority to do that comes through this agency.
And then to the manager, so, does DSS have other foster care partners besides Friends of Foster Care, or is this the primary relationship and, and the rest is kind of ad hoc?
There's a whole ecosystem that they have, just around the foster care system. They're part of it, so it's not just them, but there are other agencies that they work with, again, for a whole ecosystem around that town.
And, and do either of you know how many kids in Portsmouth are in the waitlist to get into foster care? Is there any waitlist?
Of course, I, I don't think it, it's a wait list per se. I would say that that's the CPS ongoing list, and that's one of the things that we're ready to partner with and have been for a little while now, and ask for that list so that we can start some of these services as prevention measures. So, obviously, we're trying to keep children out of the system, and if there's a little bit we can do to help that, I mean, it's, it's not, you know, we're not paying rent for families, it's not what we can afford to do. But if we can make the hard days a little bit easier, that other people can help with the haul, then we can help keep them out.
Okay, and then, then last question, in your results, I was surprised that one of the results that you didn't report on is success in moving kids from foster care to adoption. Is, is that a goal?
For us?
Yes.
That, we are neutral on that.
Okay.
We are pro-child.
Yep.
So, whatever the case goal is, reunification always being first, we are there to help with that. So, that's, I want to say, above our pay grade again. We're here to support how social services says to support, and these are the complement of services that we provide that can support. We follow the child after, for two years after they exit, or up to two years after they exit care, however they exit care, except for if they're aging out and we follow them substantially.
Okay, I'm tracking, and so then, and I'm with you, I think reunification is the ideal result. Do you have metrics on how we're doing at reunifying kids with their families?
I have...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Council, Councilman, those are determinations made by the court, and those are done by facts of the individual circumstances of the child, where this agency would fit in. It's the, they're the pegs that go in the wheel for the support for the children.
Yeah.
So, are you allowing the child to attend the tutoring that this program is? If you're not, then that's a checkmark in a different direction. So, she's just a cog in the wheel. Those determinations are made by the court on a factual basis.
I don't, I don't have the Portsmouth numbers off the top of my head, but I do have the state numbers, and it's not good. We reunify 26% of our youth, and the national average is over 40%. We age out, last year, 22% of our kids, the national average is closer to 11. We are not doing a good job as a state, and I don't know why that is either. Trust me, I spend a lot of time thinking about it, and I look at states like Alabama, they're just knocking it out of the park compared to what we're doing. And I see similar issues of poverty, which is highly relevant to foster care, but somehow, we're not serving our, we're not serving those kids very well.
Reunification is based on whether or not the guardian parent, the, the original parents are appropriate for the child. And so, that determination is based on a number of factors, not so much dependent on the child's performance, but also on the parent's performance, so.
So, I'm tracking what you're saying, and I get that they're a cog in the wheel. I guess, I wonder if, if everybody's a cog in the wheel, then who's working to achieve reunification?
Social workers and the courts.
DSS?
That's correct.
Okay. And do we, do we have those metrics for our success rate inside DSS for, for...
I can get you that.
Moving kids out of foster care, whether it's reunification or adoption, because, because the, the metrics on kids in foster care would suggest we should be working to get kids out of foster care because the, the stats are not so good for the kids that end up bouncing from foster home to foster home.
So, I will, I will say this. Please, please take away from my talk that foster care is not an effective intervention for helping children, because it is, we compare them to the non-foster care population, which is wholly unfair. And the reason that I do that is because some of our metrics show that our foster kids can outperform their non-foster care peers, given the right support. But foster care is an effective intervention. It just so happens that it is a very hard life, and the chips are stacked against you. So, it's that much more that we need to pour into these kids to give them a leg up in life, because otherwise, the recidivism rate is going to be very high.
And I, I don't want you to read into my questioning that I think this is bad or wrong. It's necessary.
Absolutely.
But the, clearly, the better outcomes from a society standpoint are putting kids back into healthy family situations because of the, the other outcomes that are tied to that compared to the statistics that you showed.
Yeah, most certainly.
I can shoot him over.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Bryant, may we have a floor?
Thank you, Dr. Bullock, for this, and I think to Councilman Hugel's point, it's a very complicated and complex system involving lots of different parties and players, courts included. And what you're doing here is really important work to target individuals that are in the system, and it's, it's way over their heads, and so I appreciate the work that you're doing. Really interested in this support that you're giving to kids over the age of 21, you said, up to age 26. I think that's really a fantastic point, because that's a huge transition for young people, and to take your services that far is really wonderful to see. So, it is very complex and very complicated. This work that you're doing, I see as very targeted to support who you can, and thank you for doing that.
We try and be effective.
Yeah.
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 Thank you.
Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have a floor?
I think my colleague, Councilwoman Thomas, nailed it. A lot of information here, I think we all are aware of foster kids, but she shared some information that I wasn't aware of and removed the veil of invisibility in your presentation. But I think the saying, "It takes a village," I think it's certainly very true. I think the key ingredient is found in foster parents who are, you know, do it out of love and out of nurturing these children, and, and they can go from there to the very top. I don't know how many of you are aware, our current vice president was a foster child. He became a foster child at 12 years old. So, you know, with the, the right environment, the right amount of love, and nurturing, these kids can end up being a council member, a mayor, or, or anything in life. But, the but is people who believe in them and show them the right amount of love and caring. So, thanks for sharing the information.
I just wanted to, I wanted to point out to council, and I think Councilman Moody, Vice Mayor Moody, said it best, is that sometimes foster care is not just a holding place, it's a nurturing place, and that the presumption is not always that it's a bad place, it's, it's a necessary place. And so, I, the request for those particular figures were, I just want to make sure that you're reviewing them in the context. There's so much behind the numbers that it doesn't necessarily equate to good or bad, and I think you understand that, just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Well, Dr. Bullock, I do want to say on behalf of my colleagues, thank you for your efforts in standing in the gap. There's so many young people, our children, that we, we have to make sure that we are paying attention and providing what they really need. So, I do have a couple of questions for you. Have you reached out to any of the redevelopment and housing organizations to meet any of the executive directors to see if there are specific needs that they need, that they have in those communities? I would encourage you to do that. The other thing is, our, our director here, I can get you her information. The other thing is, I, I know you, you, you talked about begging folks, and we don't believe that you need to beg people. I think, you know, and I, I know why you're saying that, but this is really necessary work. And I've often said, for success to happen, good people need to care. But they don't just need to care with their words, they need to care with their resources. And so, you, you talked about funding, you talked about those things, because this stuff just doesn't happen, right? So, help me understand what, you obviously work with other localities, is that fair?
Yes.
And so, what are other localities doing in terms of their commitment, perhaps, funding to your program? to your program? Do you have other localities that are funding a portion of your program or making a contribution? What, what does that look like?
So the only, the only city funding that we have had is the Norfolk Pick Grant, and that was the first. And we typically do not ask the cities, right, wrong, or indifferent, for funding.
Okay.
And we generate all of our own funding. There's a couple of reasons for that, I want to make sure I can be humble. I want to make sure that, that I have the autonomy to, to make the expenditures where we see that the expenditures are needed. Let's suffer from that, kind of see the cities as already investing in the partnership through the DSS agencies and, and see the big gap there, assuming that all the funding that can go to these children is going to these children.
Sure. Well, we do have a couple of organizations within the city of Portsmouth, the Portsmouth General Hospital Foundation, Seva Seth, which is Southeastern Community Foundation. I have some friends that have personal family foundations, so we can get together and I can share some contact information.
Thank you.
For you to reach out, and I'd be more than happy to give you a open door in that process.
Thank you.
If I don't get with you today, you can certainly call my office, and we can confer at that time.
I will do that.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you. I so appreciate your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bullock.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter, you have a floor.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Reddick is, she's ready. She has a presentation or a handout, I think, that she wants to give us concerning the Museum of Black Women Innovators. It is one of the, I didn't say, they're trying to stand up inside the Mustard Seed Place. Dr. Reddick, you're ready?
I am. Good evening.
Good evening, madam.
Thank you for your time, and I've had a little bit of experience presenting to the council last year, but this is my first time presenting at a working session, so what, very sure about what, how the flow was. So hopefully, these materials will help you with kind of understanding the overview. And so we are presenting the next phase of the Mustard Seed Place. I want to give those who may not be as familiar, and very grateful, we've seen quite a few of you over the last few weeks, as our small businesses have been having their ribbon cutting. So thank you so much for coming out and supporting the companies that are there. But just want to give you, in just over a year, what we've accomplished in the building. We've had over 1,042 training hours for businesses, for wealth building and financial literacy, for understanding self and identity. Those are just some of the trainings that we have conducted. We have the Old Dominion University Women's Business Center that's located in the building, and so we have been doing quite a bit of work there with the trainings of fact today. We had a pretty lengthy session, which was the graduation of a cohort of women and men business owners in what we host, which is capital building for those companies. We've had 58 member meetups, 32 special events, and we've had five legislative events that have taken place. On the next slide, we've given you the logos of the businesses. These are women-owned, as well as women-centric businesses. So we have small businesses such as Staff for You, which does corporate staffing, Patriot Women Coaching, which does coaching for individuals, women who are affiliated with the military, as well as women-centric businesses, such as the YWCA, Southampton Roads is now headquartered in our building, and Bon Secor just opened their primary care facility. The ribbon cutting was just last week. So those are examples of the businesses there. We've received quite a bit, on the next slide, quite a bit of media attention for the different businesses that are there. And so we are finding that as we work as a collective, it is so much more powerful than each of these small businesses trying to go out and do it for themselves. So visibility is what our focus has been. We've had over 9,000 visitors in our first, actually, this data was from our first 11 months. 9,000 visitors, not just from Portsmouth, but from Hampton Roads, as far as Williamsburg, et cetera. So I want to talk about what's next. At our one-year anniversary mark, we announced that Phase Two of the building will be the Museum of Black Women Innovators. This is something that we've been working on for about eight months now with various experts throughout the country. When we announced it, which was at the end of March, I had examples of the media coverage that came out, including getting Portsmouth into a full page, couple of pages, of Black Enterprise Magazine, because they were here covering the entire weekend of the announcement. And so they are excited about what we'll be able to do in the space with the museum. So if you go into page seven of the packet that I've given you, this gives you, we have hired the same museum company that did the build out of the new Nauticus, and so, Roto. And so they are working with us as we are in Phase Two of the planning for the museum. And on page seven, it's slide 13, you will see kind of the imagery that we are looking at having in the space. For those who may not be familiar, this is 340 High Street, which was the famous building originally. The last, before we purchased it, it was the TCC Arts Building. So the, the guts and, you know, the bones are made for galleries. And so we are going to keep the space basically as is, the high ceilings, et cetera, lend itself nicely to the galleries that we will be setting up. So if you see slide 13, this is the look. It's interactive, it will incorporate artificial intelligence, where we're able to immerse ourselves in the era that we're talking about and the experience that we're talking about. There will be a theater for presentations, much like a TED Talk kind of look and feel, that we will be attracting national innovators. And it's so important that when I'm saying innovators, I don't simply mean inventors, but those women who have innovated solutions. And so that could be, they've started programs, that could be all types of things. But these are women who have done amazing things and shoulders on which we stand today, and oftentimes never receive the credit. The goal is to build a community of innovators, problem solvers, big ideas, from the youth to the seniors. And so slide 15 shows you that this is visitor engagement is what we're looking for. There will be areas where visitors can take the inspiration that they saw throughout the building, gather to create big ideas. And then places where they will have opportunities to reflect, reflect on what they've seen, reflect on some things in their past that they may have not have thought was a big deal, but little things that are watered can become a big idea. And so in that moment of reflections, where there's water, sound, and words that help us to focus, that is what you see on slide 16. So these are the inspirational pictures. So we wanted to take some time to organize our thoughts based on the questions that we received. And so as I'm going through, I'm going to hit on the questions that were asked. And the first was in the category of organizational purpose and impact, and that's slide 17. And so the question was, what is our mission statement, and how does it align with the mission and vision and economic development goals of Portsmouth? And so the MOBWE mission is to, we exist to inspire, and I'm on slide 18, empower and educate all people by celebrating the groundbreaking achievements of Black Women Innovators. Through immersive experiences and powerful storytelling, we honor their legacies, foster understanding, and ignite the drive for future generations to break barriers and lead with purpose. So a few things that I hope will jump off the page in this mission statement is, number one, we want to inspire, we want to be a place where people come in and they're inquisitive. Right now, people come to the door asking, what can we buy, what can we do? The building is nice, what, what, what? And so we know that there's interest in coming in. And so we want to inspire individuals to not just see problems in our city, in our state, in our nation, but inspire them to be problem solvers, to empower and to educate people by celebrating individuals who did a whole lot with nothing. No access to computers many times, no access to information, but simply having the, feeling empowered in their own way to make a difference. And that this is an immersive experience, not just looking at pictures on the wall, but getting engaged in what was involved in the innovations. So our vision statement is to be the premier destination where girls, women, individuals, so all people of all ages, dream big, empower one another, and find inspiration in the unprecedented achievements of Black Women Innovators, igniting a movement of bold leaders for generations to come. So as I reflected on the mission and vision of Portsmouth, so the mission of the city of Portsmouth is you envision a vibrant waterfront city. And so we are just steps away from the waterfront and bringing the vibrancy, if you've come into the Mustard Seed Place with all of the colors and all of the paintings that are on the wall already, we're embracing being a part of that waterfront city, where individuals feel safe. And just this morning, at the graduation ceremony, as each woman stood up and got their, their certification, and they said that they felt safe to think and talk about their finances out loud. So that's what we endeavor to be in that building, a safe space that empowers while celebrating our rich history, all of our history. Her story is our history. And so we feel that we fit right into the mission to enjoy the diverse community that embodies hope, resilience, and lifelong learning. That, in fact, is wedded quite naturally to our mission statement. And then the vision, to provide effective, responsible, and innovative services. Innovation, that's what we're celebrating. That enhances the quality of life, because when we all can be problem solvers instead of admiring problems, then we all can help to create a better quality of life. And we find a sense of belonging, that the least of us are as important as the most of us, and our value can be honored in a space such as MOBWE. So how does this speak to economic value? Well, on slide 21, museums account for $50 billion annually to the U.S. economy, 726,000 jobs supported nationally through museum sectors, and $12 billion in tax revenue. So certainly, I believe that it will help drive the economic value to the city of Portsmouth. So what's so different about this? Well, number one, it's the first museum of its kind in the nation. Roto, who's done probably something to the tune of 112 different museum projects, the researchers who we've engaged with, we have a team of PhDs who've been involved. We've looked high and low, and believe it or not, this does not exist in the nation. It is, we are building a museum beyond the walls until we are finished with the development of the exhibits, where we're starting to do the education around what will be included in the museums. The Centers for Black Women's Contribution in all fields, science, art, businesses, and beyond, we will feature interactive innovative hubs and experiential exhibits. We will be hosting an innovator and residency program in collaboration with local and national universities, mentorship programs, and a national summit. And we reclaim overlooked narratives and validates cultural contributions. Slide 23 speaks to our values, and all of this, I must say, has been embedded with various focus groups that we've conducted, both locally, nationally, across all religions, or several religions, won't say all religions, ethnicities, genders, just to see the interests across all lines. And so these value statements came from some of those focus groups, so that we listen, we actively listen to the stories and experiences of Black Women Innovators, ensuring their voices are authentically represented and heard. We will honor the trailblazers who have paved the way, celebrating their achievements and preserving their legacies for future generations. Educate visitors through immersive and interactive exhibits, fostering a deeper understanding of historical and cultural impact of Black Women Innovators. Inform the community of Portsmouth and beyond about the significant contributions of Black Women Innovators, promoting awareness, understanding, and appreciation. And then connecting. We strive to connect people from all walks of life, building bridges beyond generations' cultures and communities through shared stories and experiences. So the next section of questions were about community engagement and educational values. So on slide 25, we speak to some of the questions that were answered or asked, and what has the community engagement been and what will it be? We hosted Momentum 2025, which is where we introduced and began to immerse the community in the concept of the museum. This was a three-day event. We had over 350 individuals who came out throughout the three days. We kicked it off with a VIP dinner. The next day was a full day of events, and we hosted a keynote speaker, Tamika Mallory, was a national personality, a partnership with the National Urban League. And then we ended that entire weekend with a day of caring with the YWCA of Southampton Roads, where we created beauty boxes for the women who are in shelters. We conducted community focus groups to gather input on desired exhibits and programming. We're developing an educational series in collaboration with area schools to ensure accurate and inspiring storytelling. And then our future plans is to include an innovation lab, youth engagement programs, and intergenerational events upon the museum opening. The audience is everyone, all ages. We have created exhibits that are for the young preschoolers, all the way up to our seniors, curious scholars, this will be a big part of what we, who we will cater to, industry professionals and organizations, and activists. So there was a visitor density study conducted by Roto, and on slide 27, it gives you kind of the schematic of the outcomes of that, that about 50% of our audience were expecting to be adults. We're expecting 10 to 11-year-olds, and then will be between 50% shared, 10 and 11-year-olds down to four-year-olds. So the youngest exhibit, or the exhibit that will reach the youngest age would be the four-year-olds. There, on that same slide, 27, it kind of gives you the movement, and we've done, they've done kind of the traffic flow. And so in that building, the current opening or the current entrance will be the museum entrance. There will be a side entrance that's really already there, but not currently operational, because there's a window there. They're creating a side entrance that will be used for the tenants. And so this shows you kind of the flow of And so, this shows you kind of the flow of how individuals will move throughout the space. This space will be the first and third floors of the building. During the anniversary weekend, we kicked off the auxiliary group, and this model was used by Hospital of King's Daughters, King's Daughters Hospital, and their auxiliary group. We had named this the Crumpler Simpson Society. Crumpler Simpson Society, it is a legacy. The first African-American woman to become a PhD was Crumpler, and the first African-American woman to become an MD, last name was Simpson, so that is Crumpler Simpson Society. And this encompasses African-American women throughout the Hampton Roads area who have achieved the highest level of education, PhD, MD, JV, all the D's, all the doctors, who gathered the day, Friday of the anniversary, to be the force behind getting this grassroots effort moving. And so, that is a significant part of this model. They will serve as advisory board members, and it's also ensuring that we are gathering the artifacts that will be important for this space. Dr. Marsha Constant from the Tidewater Community College is a member of the society and one of the founding members. And then, Dr. Beverly Roberts Atwater from Eastern Virginia Medical School, now Old Dominion University, is the other member. And honestly, they were part of the brain children behind this, and inspiration for Crumpler Simpson Society. On slide 29, these are the 11 areas that we will be focusing on as we look at our innovators. The question asked was asked, "Will Portsmouth be represented, and will Virginia be represented?" So, if you can, you know, the exhibits that I showed you on page 13, page seven, slide 13, as you walk in and you're seeing these major, large images, there are 11 of them that we will start with. And those 11 will cover each of these areas that you see on slide 29, healthcare and medicine, technology, beauty and cosmetics, education, et cetera, et cetera, government and military policies, and trade and construction. And there are three so far that the team, including Roto, they've done a considerable amount of research. Three that we are targeting for Portsmouth to be represented. Missy Elliott under the category of music. Senator Louise Lucas under the category of government and military policy. And Matilda Joyner-Jones under the category of music. Five Virginia natives are being discussed. So, this will be highlighting Portsmouth and also highlighting Virginia, but we are leaving room because there's some extraordinary women who are not from Virginia or Portsmouth that we want to include. Now, these are the 11 main exhibits that you see, but there are many behind those individuals that will also be displayed. The next section was around operations and governance. So, in our staffing plan currently, we are having a very slim staffing plan for the first two years and building as we need, and using outsourced agencies for work. So, we are in the process of hiring our museum director. We have one more interview, but the person that we're looking at has eight years of experience with Norfolk Botanical Gardens, four years, I believe, experience with Chrysler Museum, and so, she is our top runner at this time. Our facilities and event manager is already in place at the Mustard Seed Place currently. We outsource our security. We have 24 hours or any time we are open, so, security through Freelance Security, which is a Portsmouth-based security company. Charet Agency is our marketing company that we've been using from the onset of this planning, and then, Roto Group, we will continue to outsource. We are building the board and looking to you all to help assist us to ensure that Portsmouth is represented on the board. That is something important. As we've been talking to funders, potential funders, the question has been, what is the City of Portsmouth involvement? Because this is the first in the nation, and certainly would bring quite nice attention to Portsmouth, just as it has already with Black Enterprise Magazine. And so, we have had conversations with the Director of Museum and Tourism for the City of Portsmouth, and he's agreed to serve on the board. We've been having conversations with other significant members in the community, but certainly, that is our next goal, is to find our director and then build the board. So, our timeline for Phase One, Phase One will be 7,000 square feet. It is the first floor. The third floor will be Phase Two. And so, on slide 32, we show you where we are in the process. We are about to begin the exhibit curation and the minor construction. Again, the first floor, basically, the bones are there. There will be a hallway added, but that's the extent of the construction for the first floor. The grand opening will be in December. It might be December 31st, but it will be December. There will be Gallery One with one, Gallery One, which will be one of the main rooms on the first floor, and a digital museum that will include the full, big picture of the museum. This is something that through our different meetings with different museums throughout the nation, they are really encouraging us to start with the digital form of the museum, which is an interactive way for individuals throughout the nation or internationally to get involved, until they're able to actually physically come on site. All right, so, the question was, Mobley projected visitation. Well, we took a look at Children's Museum, the data we found through conversation and our own research during the summer, a thousand daily is what we were able to capture based on information we were given, and off months, 250 to 400 daily. Farmer's Market, we know because we're in the heart of the farmer's market, 3,000 to 5,000 individuals, foot traffic. Nauticus, 370,000 annually. And in our first year, we had 9,000 people coming in and out of the door. So, we use, as a very conservative number, 10,000 visitors in our, in year one of the museum. The next section was about location, facility use, and economic impact. So, hopefully, everyone here knows the location. And so, the guest experience, again, it is interactive. Our goal is that there is not a cost to visitors. Our fundraising will ensure that it's donation-based at the door, but we don't want price to be a barrier for anyone to be able to visit the museum. Increased foot traffic tourism, data said that 76% of U.S. leisure travel participate in cultural heritage tourism, specifically African-American cultural travelers interested in exploring Black history and traditions. The largest spending segment in American travel, spending $2,078 per trip versus $1,345 per trip. So, again, if it's the only one in the nation, it's an attraction for individuals to come visit. So, hotel rooms increasing at the Renaissance and the new hotel that will be open shortly, hopefully. And so, this will be another reason to come and visit Portsmouth. Come to the museum, go to the casino, it's all good. We will, we have a gift shop that we will be having some premium historic, as well as trendy, cultural items that can be purchased. All right, sustainability and financial management. Bottom line is, we have projected for the startup and the first three full years of implementation or operations, about a $6 million budget. And that, the income from that really comes from six sources. Grants, and, you know, we're looking at city and state-level grants, and that is not the majority of the funding, but certainly, looking at private-public partnerships in that way. Donations, we have a Power of One campaign because anyone can be involved in ensuring that this history remains. The foundations and corporate sponsors, we have sponsorship kits that we are socializing now with some of the large firms. Exhibits to be powered by a particular company, it's $150,000, and that's one time, but that is powered by forever and ever, as well as the gallery level. So, for an entire gallery to be the name sponsor there, it is 350,000, which is much less than the other museums in the area. And so, those are the kind of things that are built into the foundations and corporate sponsorship dollars. And then, annually, we will have a fundraiser. The other two sources of income will be the gift shop sales and membership. And we've only accounted for about $50,000 a year in membership. So, museum highlights, the entire 17,000 square feet will include interactive exhibits, programming and workshops, event rental space, and gift shop. The next section asks about measuring success. We will measure success by our visitor attendance, tracking it daily, monthly, and annually, foot traffic with breakdowns in the demographics, recording attendance and engagement levels for public programs, speaker series, and special exhibits. The student outreach, how do we engage the schools? We are affiliated with Envision League Row, where we, this year, will have 400 students locally. We've had over 3,000 students that we've worked with throughout the nation, 400 here locally. And so, we will be engaging the relationships that we have in the school systems to support in any way to augment the programming that they have or may not have due to budget constructs. And so, we will be able to provide some additional programming for schools. Community partnerships, documenting our collaboration with local schools, universities, neighborhoods, civic leagues, et cetera. And then, we will be monitoring our economic contribution, assessing indirect economic impact through visitor spending, job creation, and neighborhood revitalization tied to the museum activity. We talk about our commitment to accountability. We already do much of this as we have, I am affiliated with for-profits and nonprofits and all of the training that we do in the Mustard Seed Place. So, ensuring that we have detailed budgets and financial statements, that we're reporting appropriately to the IRS for the 501(c)(3), audited financials and certified reviews, the matching funds and sponsorships that we will be documenting. Accountability for any city funds that we're able to receive, quarterly financial and programmatic reporting, performance milestones linked to the fund dispersments, annual independent audits for compliance, public-facing dashboards to demonstrate our community impact. And we're open to exploring what city partnerships and funding and oversight committee needs to be. We certainly would like to see, again, I can't say enough about the city leadership engaged for a number of reasons, so that we can be a part of the already vibrant museum community in Portsmouth and integrate in that way. Future plans and visions was the next, and I believe the final section. Yes. So, we see ourselves becoming the national recognized institution, building a permanent museum campus with immersive exhibits and innovative labs. We will have traveling exhibits, and we have space allocated for that. Really trying to push that whole TED Talk spirit and having the community coming out to speak, as well as national speakers. Developing national educational curricula and digital learning platforms, hosting an annual Global Black Women Innovators Summit, inspiring future generations by preserving and promoting untold legacies. We have already begun the process of the accreditations that are necessary to really be engaged. And so, I've listed those on slide 44. Slide 45, our strategic goals within the next three to five years. Number one is to open the first gallery by December 2025 with immersive exhibits, establish national recognition through high-profile programming, launching Mobley Innovation Fellowship for Black Women Leaders, develop digital archives and virtual museums to expand access, implement sustainable financial model with donor and earned income streams, curate traveling exhibits planned for schools, HBCUs and partner museums, establish Portsmouth as a hub for Black culture, tourism, and innovation, grow media exposure and partnerships to amplify the mission. And so, I would end there. Simply put, we are on a mission at a minimum. As you look at the three-year plan to raise our first 3 million, our goal over the next to sustain the first four years of operations is 6.2 million. I recognize where we are in the budget season. I'm just coming to you because I hope you see there's been a lot of time, attention, and the right professionals at the table to put together a model that I believe would make anyone affiliated with Portsmouth proud. And so, what I'm finding is, as I go out to the funders, the large organizations, the question continues to be, "How is Portsmouth engaged?" And so, I would like to say Portsmouth is engaged with 10% of what we're actually raising. And so, that's $600,000 over the course of multiple years, et cetera. As you can see from the budget, we're not depending simply on Portsmouth, so this will be sustained outside of Portsmouth. However, it's a major statement for something that will certainly draw attention that Portsmouth is behind it. And so, I am, I live in Virginia Beach, my business is in Norfolk. I came to Portsmouth, made a significant investment, no bank financing, and purchased that building, and I'm asking for partnership with the city to take it to the next level. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Reddicks. Are there any questions for my colleagues? Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have a floor.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Dr. Reddicks, for this extensive presentation. You've been, as you said, we've all been, had the pleasure of coming to the Mustard Seed Place, and I think the extension of the Mobley, for Black Women Innovators, is in line with what you set the vision of for the Mustard Seed to be, but it's, you know, I'm sure you know that we also, in Portsmouth, a few blocks down, have the Innovation District. So, and as in line with our, that's now being called the Link. So, it's kind of in line, as you said, with our mission and vision statement. I'm happy to see that some Portsmouth innovators will, are part of the plan to be highlighted. I wanted to point out one more, just for the radar, Adah Barbara, who, when I think about the Link, she was one of the first Black educators that also lived in Lincolnville, which the Link is named after, which was the first free Black area in Portsmouth, Virginia. And just the contributions, you know, we had Adah Barbara Public Healthing that was named after her. She's just one of those educators that formed with other women educators in Portsmouth and left a great impact on the city. And you mentioned just having some, I guess, more people from Portsmouth a part of this project. I don't, this is... I don't, this is, one of the, one of our great historians in Portsmouth is, I would say, Mae Breckenridge Haywood, is a former librarian for I.C. Norcom. She is, has been instrumental in getting historical markers for Emmanuel AME Church, which is the church I grew up in. She knows a lot about just Black women, Black history in the city of Portsmouth. So I just wanted to throw that out to you as well. I do think, see some positive momentum that we should hopefully support by having this museum. We do have our Children's Museum, but when I think about the other museum options in our downtown district, old town district, we really don't have that many. We have our Navy Museum, but when you think about innovation and that inspiration, I definitely think on that corner, in line with the Mustard Seed Place, in line with what our vision is for the city to inspire, to help people innovate and create in the city, that it's something that we should get behind and support as a city. So I just wanted to put my support vocally behind it as part of the council here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Who did you want to floor?
No, sir.
So I will add that absolutely I was at the presentation. I think it has a place in our city. Certainly, we have the Colored Museum, we have other things in the city. We have a very rich maritime history as it relates to the community. One of the other things I would recommend that you follow up with is talk to, in addition to Mae Breckenridge Haywood, Mr. Charles Johnson, who's the president of the African-American Historical Society. I think that he would be a good resource for information. But it sounds like, and it seems like it could be an amazing project, we'll have to consider what our options are. Councilwoman Bryant?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Reddicks. This is very thorough. It's a wonderful presentation. I wanted to point out that the state curriculum for social studies aligns very significantly in elementary years, particularly with important people in the city and in the state. And so I would love for you all to look into ways that we could welcome schoolchildren in, to focus specifically on SOL-aligned curriculum with important Virginians. That would be a wonderful opportunity for a very easy field trip to come downtown. Also, curious, I know in your first year, there's a lot of curiosity about the Mustard Seed, and we've all had an opportunity to go in for several ribbon cuttings and can see that the space is beautiful. Will you have signage or something on the exterior of the building to indicate that it's a museum? And will people be able to kind of walk from the coffee shop or farmer's market and just be able to enter directly? Okay, wonderful.
So thank you for that question and thank you for that recommendation. The signage on County Court Street is the Mustard Seed Place. The signage on High Street will be Mobley. So we're putting in for approval for that, that signage. So you'll know that it's a museum. The entrance that you currently came in, that is being redesigned, so it's more open for museum entrance. And we will be open during the time of the farmer's market, et cetera. And again, we are not in our budget. We've accounted for free admission. So we want to see the numbers, the way we need to see the numbers to continue to attract more, more donors.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Tillage, so you have?
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Reddicks, first I want to say thank you for the investments that you've made in Portsmouth. I think you've done a tremendous job with the Mustard Seed Place, bringing, I mean, every time I go by there, there's a new business opening. I hear it in the streets, I hear it on social media, Mustard Place, Mustard Seed Place is the place to be. So I do appreciate that investment. I think that this museum, I think, is very timely, especially with all that's going on in the nation with trying to take away history, DE and I, and to be able to highlight it here in Portsmouth, a city that's based on African-American history, is phenomenal. And also that corner, for it to be on that corner, I'm not going to go into any details, but for it to be on that corner, I think, is very commendable. I'm looking forward to seeing how we can help to partner.
Well, that's all we have, sir. Thank you, Dr. Reddicks.
Thank you, Dr. Reddicks.
For the presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Couple more items. One is simply an overview of what the agenda is going to be, but we also have a closed session. We do the overview first, that way we are rushed when we come out, we won't have, try and get this done. Have a, four public hearings today. One is an honor of street naming on Randolph Street. One is a entertainment use permit for 4806 George Washington Highway. Have an ordinance, well, two, for seaplane change. One is an ordinance to amend the city code to include seaplane as a base, as a list of permissible uses. And then after that, if that passes, to have a use permit for S rigs to operate seaplane based at 10 Cracker Parkway. We have four resolutions. One is 2623 Turnpike Road and easement for a small portion of land for Dominion Energy to place some facilities, temporary construction easement at our golf course in Suffolk. They want to use that as a construction easement as they're working on Spillway Bridge Project. And the Office of Defense Communications Corporation, OLDCC, Seafloor Resistance Study Resolution, we got the presentation previously, and we're looking to do that process for tonight. Five ordinances, public safety, answering PSAP funds, family partnership meeting, innovative initiative fund ordinance, addition to fiscal year 2020, 6BBG home fund ordinance. We projected one amount, we got slightly more than that, so we just got to make an adjustment to what that amount has been. Has the opioid settlement ordinance and a donation from the Belone Company, one of the new companies here in Portsmouth. In fact, they have their ribbon cutting here pretty soon.
Yes, we do.
That's what we have for this evening, but we also had the need for a closed session.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Do we have any liaison reports? Let's move into our closed session motion at this time. Vice Mayor Moody?
I move to go into a closed meeting, A, pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-37A8 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel employed by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel specifically regarding state and local fiscal recovery funds, and B, pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A1 for the purpose of discussing and considering appointments to boards and commissions.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Dotson?
Yes.
Mr. Hugo?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, we are in closed session.
One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements on the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting, just conclude.
Second, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Dotson?
Yes.
Mr. Hugo?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. This session is adjourned and we convene at, everybody is, how much time you need? 10 minutes?
10 minutes.
10 minutes.